Call meeting in order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is the adoption of the agenda. A couple of changes were made from what was originally published. It was an action item or a new business item. Five E, the renovable contract is now in the consent agenda, and items F one and two have been deleted from the consent agenda. Are there any other changes?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Have a motion to adopt. I have a second.
Yes.
We could stay here a long time. Well, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda, or I mean the agenda is adopted. All right, first item is a presentation of a resolution of appreciation for Mr. Bob Schwartz. You can go over here. I get to read it?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
That's all right. A resolution of appreciation for Robert J. Bob Schwartz. Whereas Robert J. Bob Schwartz has served in a number of capacities in Orange County, Virginia, including the Board of Supervisors representing the Gordon District from nineteen eighty to nineteen ninety-one. He also served as chairman in nineteen eighty-four and vice chairman from nineteen eighty-six to nineteen ninety-one. The Welfare Board, the Rappahannock Rapid End Planning District Commission, the Rappahannock River Basin Commission, and the Central Virginia Regional Jail Authority, previously known as the Central Virginia Regional Jail Board. And whereas Robert J. Schwartz has served as an Orange County representative on the Central Virginia Regional Jail Authority from its establishment in nineteen eighty-seven to nineteen ninety, and then again from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand fifteen, with honor and distinction. And whereas during his tenure on the Central Virginia Regional Jail Authority, Robert J. Schwartz provided guidance and leadership and was instrumental in carrying out the obligations and purpose of the authority as related to the overseeing and operation of the Central Virginia Regional Jail. And whereas Robert J. Schwartz has at all time demonstrated a keen interest in the welfare of his community and the people he has served, and has left an indelible mark on Orange County through his service, example, and dedication. And whereas Robert J. Schwartz has taken a part in many of Orange County's accomplishments, and wholeheartedly gave of his time and talents for the betterment of the Orange County and its citizens. Now therefore be resolved on this fourteenth day of July two thousand fifteen that the Orange County Board of Supervisor hereby extends its admiration and appreciation to Robert J. Bob Schwartz for his dedication and service, not only on the Orange County Board of Supervisors, but also on the Central Virginia Regional Jail Authority and to the citizens of Orange County. Certified, signed, leagued frame chairman.
Thank you, sir. I didn't know I did all that.
Yes, you did. And you did a lot of other things. I had to, you gave me a lot of instruction on that jail. I mean, I had to be on there for a year, but twice. And I learned an awful lot from you. Thanks a lot, Bob.
Thank you.
And the citizens of it.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, and it's an honor. And like a lot of old sayings go, what comes, what goes around comes around. And it was in November twenty-four years ago that I was the privilege honorary to honor and dedicate this building to Lindsey Gordon. And that was twenty-four years ago this November. And go back a few more years to nineteen seventy-nine when I got elected to this board that you're all sitting on. I served there twelve years, like you said, and then I went on to many other activities and commissions and boards after that. And I think I tried to give back to the county what they gave me. And Orange County's been good to me. My wife, I know she's gonna appreciate that this is the end. Because she, she won't have to ask me, where are you going tonight? Where are you going today? There'd be no more meetings. So anyhow, I appreciate it a whole lot. And good luck to the board, and thank you all for the presentation.
Let's get one picture here. Somebody's been around this long, needs to be.
Oh, okay. Better put it in large print.
All right. Again, thank you, Bob.
Thank you all.
Next on the agenda is the update of the real estate reassessment. Gary Eens?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I am not Gary Eens.
I noticed that.
I'm Mike Ditterwick. I've been the field supervisor on this project. Mr. Eens called this morning. He's tied up in a locality across the state and asked if I would please fill in. And I'm pleased to be here this afternoon. I am to give you the update to the general reassessment. We are currently at about ninety-five percent completion of the field work. We expect to complete that in a couple of weeks. Data entry on our data is on schedule, slightly behind that, but on schedule. Once the appraisers finish up the field work, they're going to beginning, excuse me, begin going back out into the field and pick up the properties that we have tagged under new construction and see how they're getting along and try to finish those out. We expect all the field work, including the new construction, to be finished by the first of October. We are on schedule to mail the change of assessment notices and to hold the hearings in November. Now, at this time, we can't determine what the results are gonna, of the reassessment's going to be, because we're not finished. But we have seen that some land values are coming down. But at the same time, single-family residential has turned around, sensed a recession, and is starting to work its way back up. How much, we do not know yet, and if it's really gonna be that much of an impact. We will continue to look at the market data all the way through until we're ready to close the file, to do the hearings. Once again in November. At this point, we check the sales every month to our assessments. And our assessment to sales ratio countywide is in the mid-nineties. Our assessment to sales ratio for single-family residential is also in the mid-nineties. And as you know, we have a separate neighborhood for Lake of the Woods. And I met with their board several weeks ago, and that is in the mid-nineties. So we feel like we're pretty fair and equalized across the county. And we will continue and finish this up on schedule or ahead of schedule. If you may have any questions, I will try to answer them.
Commercial industrial?
Commercial industrial. Mr. Wheeler, Wompler, has been working most of that. He has not told me that we're seeing much change on that. There's been some, a little bit up in different places, but I have not been privy to the details.
Just, I have a couple of comments. And it's in regards of paying attention to what this board has to say. Mr. Eens spoke to us the last time. He was advised by both myself and District Two Supervisor Jim White that if property was posted, no trespassing, that you all were not supposed to trespass upon that property to do your tax assessment. I have two properties of my own that are posted, and there was a yellow sticker left at both of those properties. The previous assessment, the assessor came on the property with no identification on the vehicle, nor any identification on his own person. If I am on this board on the next assessment, I will have great concerns awarding a contract to a company that does not listen to what is told to them.
I'm not privy to your conversation, Mr. Eens?
It was a public conversation in this meeting room at a board meeting. So all I'm saying is, either things were not passed along, or they were passed along and people did not pay attention to them. And to me, it's very important that that's done. So if you can take that back to the management.
My only comment, sir, is we are instructed by the contract to attempt to visit every property.
This is not open for discussion, sir. He was told directly by two members of this board not to trespass on posted properties.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, the Virginia Department of Transportation Quarterly Update. Mr. Mark Desbit.
Good afternoon, Chairman, and members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Can I lay this down on top of the keyboard?
Sure.
There should be a side, oh, you can do the side there, too.
You should have a copy of the most recent monthly report in your packet. I'll try to just hit some of the highlights and answering questions you may have. From a project perspective, a project that is not on the, not on the list, but will be next time is a, is a project that is, that's, we're just getting into development to improve the intersection of Route Three and Route Twenty. We're gonna use, are intending to use federal highway safety improvement funds for that project. Basically will involve rebuilding that, the signal there and adding a second left turn lane at that intersection, which should improve safety and operations there. We will be getting into design here in the next several months. And don't really have a construction date established yet, but that probably will be moving forward, and I'll be up there as it moves forward. And be happy to provide more details on that if needed.
Do you have any, any indication of timeframe?
Well, like I said, we're gonna start, we're starting design, and we haven't established a construction date yet. But I imagine that will probably be identified sometime over the next few months.
Two months?
No, we'll identify a construction schedule over the next few months. And I'll, I'll let you know, I'll keep you up to date on that. Also, we've, also looking at the, that same corridor at the Lake of the Woods interest in Route Three, where there's some issues there. Our traffic engineer's looked at possible, he's got some signal upgrade funds that he can use to upgrade that signal. And I think there's some funding that the county has that can be possibly utilized to improve that intersection. So we're looking at offsetting those left turn lanes so we can make that intersection, make it function, make it function a lot better, operate better with the left turn lanes. So I think it, right now, it's a protected-only left turns, and this would make it a permissive left turn, where they could turn, you know, on a green ball. And also upgrade it, upgrade the signal system. There's several signals that have been installed in the last few years on Route Three, and are also looking at, at re-timing all the signals and hopefully coordinating them a little better. So they'll be working on that in the next several months. From a maintenance operations perspective, we're busy mowing, patching, rating gravel roads, dust control on gravel roads, ditching, debris entry removal and sign installation and repairs. We also have several roads that are in line to be resurfaced and surface treated. I have a list of those if you'd like to see them. I think I've provided that list before. Route six oh one from Route Three to six oh three, which is a flat-run road. And Route six eleven from Route Twenty to six oh four, scheduled to be resurfaced for the end of the year. And also Route six seventy-one from Route eleven oh five to the, to the end, is scheduled to be resurfaced.
So six oh one is just from Three to the Indian Town?
Yes.
And what timeframe?
Before the end of, before the end of the year.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have an exact schedule.
All right.
But it will be, there's a, I think, December, no, November fifteenth completion date on that project. So it'll be sometime from now on in. Met with Supervisor Prozir in the last couple of weeks. Looked at Route six oh eight, some drainage issues there, and pavement issues on six oh four and six eleven, and also a drainage issue on Routes, on Lawyers Road that we're working with. Also working with the county staff on some flat-run road, Flat Run Court Road and Rapid End Court. A couple of roads that were not, fell through the cracks, were not taken into the system. We're working out, trying to work out a way to get those improved so that they can be taken into the system. We're also working to resurface the right turn lane going into Gordonsville Gates. That was never resurfaced. We're, we do have a bond that we can, that DOT holds, that we can get that, that right turn lane resurfaced. So we're working to get that done. We did meet recently with county staff and attorney to discuss with, met with some residents of Gordonsville Gates to kind of get a path forward on how the roads in there can be improved to meet state standards. That's gonna be a work in progress, dealing with the bank, the banks that own the rest of the property and the property owners and things like that. It's, it's not gonna be an easy, easy task. I don't know if there's any feedback, any feedback from what you've heard?
I hear.
Okay. And from a traffic, traffic perspective, we did receive a request from a local resident through Supervisor Johnson to look at the speed limit on Route six forty-four. We did a traffic study on Routes, on Route six forty-four, and recommendation was to, the road is currently unposted. So it means it's statutory fifty-five. The results of the speed study were to post it at forty-five and also to erect some, some signage, Chevron signs in some of the curves, and replace the stop ahead sign. That study was just completed in the last couple of weeks, so the sign work hasn't been accomplished yet. But that will be done in very short order. Also, our traffic engineer is working on a new, it's new for this area. Currently, when you go to a traffic signal and make a left turn, you typically will, will see a red ball, I mean, a green ball, the permissive left. Well, now we're turning, we're, the new, the new thing to, to take care of that is a, is called a flashing yellow arrow. Where instead of a green ball, you'll actually have a flashing yellow arrow. So you'll be able to make a left turn on a flashing yellow arrow. You know, it's a traffic, if you have a gap in the traffic.
That could be throughout the state, then?
That's something we're easing into. There's also, you know, there's a cost associated with that. One of the, a couple of the intersections he's looking at is Route Three at Walmart. I think we're currently have a five-section head with, you know, it's a protected left. And actually, no, that's a, that's a permissive left. And he's gonna convert that from a five-section head with a green ball to a yellow flashing, flashing yellow arrow. And also looking at that on Route Twenty and Route five twenty-two.
Okay. What timeframe on that, any?
Those should be done within the next six months, I believe. Yeah.
Okay.
Should see those. And also.
The flashing yellow arrow?
Yes.
So it's gonna be red sometimes?
No, what will happen is.
Or it'll be yellow all the time?
It'll be, no, it'll be, you pull up to it, you know, usually you'll have a green, you know, the through traffic will have a green. The left-turning traffic will be flashing yellow. That, that means.
All the time?
Yes. Well, not all the time. When it's red, you'll have to stop. When it's, when you pull up and it'll be a red ball for through traffic, then the left turn will have to stop. But when it's green for through traffic and green for the opposing traffic, the left turn will have a flashing yellow arrow. So when traffic is, when you have a gap and you can make it out safely, you can turn left.
To make a little more caution when you're turning against opposing traffic?
Right now, a lot of the intersections, you have what are called five-section head, where it has a, a red arrow and a, I mean, it has a red light for the left turn. That means you can't even turn when that red light is there. So this will make it a lot.
Move traffic better.
Move traffic better, yes. And one final thing, HP two, House Bill two, which is the new law that was passed a year or two ago about the ranking of projects on a statewide basis and on a district-wide basis. That is being, that, the implementation of that is being finalized. And we'll be setting up a meeting with Administrator, Mr. David, to kind of go over details and potential projects from Orange County that may be able to be submitted for that. But that's, that's kind of what I have for tonight. Any questions?
You have any more questions?
No.
Good report, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
I guess, since Mr. White's not here. If you recall, Mark, and this was in the transition when you were off and others were, I think, discussions about looking at five twenty-two and twenty?
Right.
Intersection and, and trying to get our arms around kind of the peak loading in Sundays and weekend summer time traffic and, and some of the, the, I guess, the offsetting accidents that are occurring there. And, and trying to get a, an idea of what may be a long-term improvement for that intersection. And I think we were getting some feedback that there may be some monies out there to at least start a kind of a planning process for that intersection improvement. I know it's primary roads and it's, you're in secondary world, but I, you're from the department, you're here tonight. So I wanted to kind of reinvigorate that, because that was important to Mr. White, and I think overall for our transportation network.
Right. There was a meeting a few weeks ago where I think we, actually a study was done, looked at several options. One was involved a roundabout.
Right.
One involved doing some improvements to Route five twenty-two approaches to, to provide more, I think adding a through lane, through lane, separating the left turns from the through lanes, right?
Right.
And trying to make that intersection, you know, a little more efficient. And, you know, that would help in the summer months, providing a dedicated left turn lane for those lefts to be made. Right now, I think it's a through left and then there's a right turn, a right turn slip ramp, I think.
Right, so I guess.
Yeah, we're still, that's on our plate, yeah.
As long as you've met a couple of weeks ago on it, I think that.
Yeah. We met with Supervisor White and some of our traffic and planning staff. I wasn't there, but they, they discussed it.
They actually did install some better signage there today for people that apparently can't see this white stop bar. It says, "Stop here on red with an arrow." So apparently people don't look in front of them and down when they're driving. They installed that today.
That's good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Move on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
So we have.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. He usually makes all the motions.
I know, I got other.
A lot of practice down here.
All right. Department Director, Constitutional Officer Reports, Tourism Quarterly Report. Lee Meyer.
Come there in big items this time. Good evening, gentlemen. A lot of the stuff that is in my quarterly report, you will have already seen in the local newspaper, thanks to our friends at the Orange Review. A couple of things that you will not see in the paper were the visitor center visitation for the, especially the month of June. You'll see that it has risen to the levels comparable with the past years. I've been reporting to you that visitation at our visitor center is on a downward trend, as you'll see by the previous months. What we attribute the June influx to is the release of our Railfan Tour that we did. We had a, a release event, as you'll remember, back in May for that. And J six eleven came through the first of June, which heightened everybody's interest. We have had an overwhelmingly positive response to our Railfan Tour. We've had people from Ohio, Michigan, different areas like that, get the information that we've published it and have been requesting copies of it. And been traveling here to come to our visitor center to get copies or just taking the tour themselves. So we're very pleased with all the publicity that we've received for that, and everyone's interested in it. So that is the reason for the increase in our visitation at the visitor center in June. As you will see from our website, our website numbers are going through the roof. This is the first time we've ever hit over seven thousand on our website since we've had a website. So we're very pleased with that. We expect those to only continue to rise as we do our website redesign. That was in this year's fiscal year's budget. We've already started working with a designer on that to include responsive design, to include embedded video, a Google Calendar, and some other nice things for the consumer. So we're looking for those numbers to continue to rise on that.
Excuse me, Lee, just real quick, responsive design, can you explain what that is?
It is so that it's mobile-friendly on your phones. Right now, our website is so chock full of information that when you pull it up on your cell phone, it looks about this big. And it's very hard to navigate. So we're gonna be moving toward responsive design so that people can more easily navigate our website on their mobile devices. Because we know that the reason that they're not coming to our visitor center to get information is because they can access everything on our website as they travel.
And, and the way technology works, they, it just does it because it knows it's going to a smaller mobile screen rather than a laptop desk.
Absolutely.
And, and the literature and the data says that if you're not in a robot, tourism responsive design, they're gonna go somewhere else.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So we're trying to bring it up so that we're more responsive to what the consumers are asking for. Sure. Another thing that we have done in this past quarter was Orange County Tourism received a Virgo Award from the Virginia Associations and Conventions and Visitor Bureaus for the "Right Here in Orange County" video that we produced with the help of the Friends of Orange County, our friends at Willa Grove and the Westwood Farm and different other businesses that were highlighted in there. So we're very pleased about that. I think that makes our third one in the past four years. So next year, we'll be putting up our Railfan Tour for one of, for one of awards, and hopefully we keep this, this streak going. So we're very pleased about that. One of the last things that I want to mention was Drive Tourism. It was an initiative of the Tourism Advisory Committee. And we're pleased to say that we completed all three of the workshops, the homework and everything. And I have this evening to present to the Board of Supervisors the plaque that was presented to us from the state that says that Orange County is a drive tourism certified community. So I'll be giving that to Allison and hopefully ask if y'all would like to put it up somewhere down here to, for the citizens to be able to see that we have completed that. I also have, as I mentioned before, we received a commendation from the General Assembly for the Sescua Centennial. I also had that commendation framed to be displayed down here as well. So. So if y'all have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them at this time.
I actually just have a comment. When you finished your third session out at the airport, I happened to be out there. What a surprise to some people in this room. But the gentleman from Virginia Tourism was extremely impressed with the activity, the interest, everything that the people from both the staff and the advisory council were doing. It was, it was nice to see, because he was, usually you see a lot of people from the state come out and do something, they go on their way, and it's just, they have to do it. He was very excited about it, so, very good.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, we have a wonderful group of tourism partners in the community, and they are very energized and very interested in, in seeing tourism grow in Orange County and being a part of it. So we're very blessed to have that.
Thank you very much. Keep up the good work. I mean, it's, it looks impressive all the time.
Thank you so much. I greatly appreciate it.
All right. Next item, landfill closure project. I like your history.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I think I might have to make a request. I seem to always follow Parks and Rec or tourism. They're hard to follow, but I'll do the best I can.
Get all the happy stuff.
Yeah, that's right. Generally, I'm up here to ask for money.
Well, just remember, you have one of the highest places in the county that's not on a mountain.
That's right. I think we created that.
And you just come and talk trash.
That's right.
Coming to talk trash. The memo that I provided with the PowerPoint, just, I thought it was, it would be a good idea to add a little brief history of, of the landfill. Some of it that I hadn't really researched before. So it was kind of a education for me as well. And the other thing I, I noted in the memo that the, the permit that DEQ issued in nineteen eighty-nine, I, I can't find any documentation on if we solicited for that permit or, or why exactly it was issued. But it was in fact issued, so. I don't know, Mr. Johnson, if, if you recall any history from that far back?
We should have grabbed Bob before he left.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. I know there was, I'm fairly certain there was a landfill out there before nineteen seventy-three, I'm I'm fairly certain there was a landfill out there before nineteen seventy-three, um, but I don't know, uh, uh, to that specific question of why something new was done in eighty-nine, I I mean, uh, it it.
It 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 became the processor of, as I noted in the memo, um, uh, it morphed into another permit that was that was done at the county's request. Uh, ninety-four, and then that's the permit that in two thousand eight we, uh, saw, uh, amendment to and became the permit that's that's for the, uh. The cell that we're actively using today, um. Go- going to the PowerPoint.
So you, so the, so permit ninety?
So permit ninety was the original, was the original.
Was that, was that ever closed out or?
Yes, well, it's, the 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 landfill itself is closed out, the permit, permit's still there and it'll remain there until we finish the, uh. Thirty-year monitoring period, um, that began, uh, in October of twenty fourteen.
Permit ninety or?
That's for permit ninety. That's that's the landfill section that we we closed and that's what the, uh, PowerPoint reflects, um. So that's that's the big tall mountain of trash that began in nineteen seventy-three and closed in.
And so permit five thirty-two, you you don't know what that is?
Permit five thirty-two, uh, was changed to permit five sixty-six. When the county hired Draper Aden to update permit five thirty-two to bring it up to new regulations that came out in nineteen ninety-three.
Okay.
So permit five thirty-two no longer exists, it's now permit five sixty-six, which is the permit that we're operating under with the new cell. If that makes sense, that makes sense?
So in nineteen eighty, in nineteen eighty-nine, this was the start of the new, the new cells?
In nineteen eighty-nine, DEQ issued a permit that was adjacent to but not part of permit ninety. It was, it was on, on the county-owned property, but it was, was not. Adjacent, it was close to where permit ninety is now, but it was actually a a brand-new permit, um. Then then regulations changed and the county hired Draper Aden to to come out and look at that permit and bring it up to the new regulations from nineteen ninety-three, so. Draper did that in nineteen ninety-four and as a result of the updates of that permit, for whatever reason, DEQ determined that they would just close that permit that we never used. That five thirty-two permit, we never used it.
Okay, so we had a permit to expand, but we never used it?
We had a permit to create a new landfill.
And that's five thirty-two?
Correct.
But we never used it?
We never used it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it was, so it was closed out and they and they they went back through the process and got five sixty-six?
Correct.
And five sixty-six is the 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 landfill that we're using now, the new land?
Correct, yes, that's correct.
Okay, alright.
So that that risen permit morphed several times because the most recent thing, action that we took was to ask DEQ to amend permit five sixty-six because in its original form. It was, it was only, um, two cells that totaled about eighteen acres and these two cells were separated by a wetlands area. So we went back to DEQ, starting in two thousand eight, and had discussions about expanding that permit and, uh. Actually eliminating those wetlands and making all the cells congruent and and that that permit amendment was issued in twenty thirteen, twenty twelve. Twenty one, twenty eleven.
So what did they do, uh, uh, because I I was, you know, I was on the board at the beginning of that process, but not for when it actually happened, so what did they do? They made made it all one cell?
They made it all one waste management area, but it's actually eight different cells.
Okay, is there?
And so right now, we've only created one of those eight cells.
Okay, then what about the wet wetlands? What, how did we work around the wetlands?
We, uh, we basically paid funds into a wetlands bank and then we, we took some existing property on on the backside of the property that we owned. By the landfill and, uh, put a stream and some buffer areas into a, uh, an easement. So that mi- that mitigated the the wetlands that we eliminated.
So we drained the swamp basically and we're gonna put trash in?
Well, it really wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't swamp, but.
It was a metaphorical swamp. Okay, and and so it, so what is the total acreage of the eight cells?
Uh, forty-seven acres, about.
Wow, okay. And what is the projected lifespan of that? Like, be like thirty years?
Thirty-plus years.
Okay, yeah, okay.
A- actually, it's right at, right at forty.
Yeah, I'll be thinking, yeah, good.
Any other questions on that? Um, look looking, I'm sorry?
No, go ahead. Now we're gonna talk about the closure.
The, um, the first slide is just a, uh, a detail of the the actual closure cap profile, um. And I won't speak this much about all the slides, but in this one, I think it's important to to, um, explain. This is actually a modified closure detail, or at least it was when we submitted the closure plan to DEQ. Um, the, um, the geocomposite drainage layer actually, uh, saves us a pretty substantial amount of dirt because. The regulations that were in place at the time that we submitted the, uh, closure plan called for eighteen inches of clay material. Um, we we submitted, uh, a modified profile and replaced that eighteen inches of clay with the geo. Uh, composite drainage layer, uh, and that had to go through a process of, uh, public hearings and and all that because that was, uh. Not something that was specifically in the regulations at the time. Obviously was approved and that's, and this is the closure cap profile that we used. Timing's everything. Shortly after we finished closure, new regulations have come out and now this is an acceptable, uh, profile within the the regulation, so. Moving forward, folks won't have to kind of jump through all the hoops that we did.
Okay, so forty mils of, uh, of material instead of eighteen inches of clay?
Yep. Uh, it's, that's right. Um, I I will tell you that the this material's not cheap, but, um. It it basically is a wash from a cost standpoint, believe it or not, but the fact of the matter is we we don't have that much dirt on site to, uh. Plus, we don't, we didn't have the the type of clay that's required to to form that cap, so we would have had to have imported that material from somewhere. So it would have ended up being more expensive a- and and used a lot more material. Um, the next slide is we we, um. You know, I I I tried to keep this PowerPoint brief and and I'm I'm already thinking about other pictures I I could have put in here. I I I do wanna say that we did start this project in December. Um, and the and the reason for that was is to get everything in place so that we were seeding in the proper time of year, which is late summer, early fall, and that's how it worked out, so, um. Uh, we did start stockpile material in December. However, prior to that, we we installed all of the, uh, gas vents. That was the first action, uh, that was taken on the closure project. There was. I think twenty-five vents that had to be installed as part of the closure, um. And if you if you all may remember, the the old landfill, um, the the, what you see in this slide is the intermediate cover, which is basically the eighteen inches that's required to be. Of dirt that's required to be over top of the waste, um, and that whole slope had vegetation on it because it it was required. Whenever you finish a working face and move to another section of landfill, you're required to put vegetation on, so we had to strip all the vegetation off. And prepare that intermediate cover and that's, that's, um, that's actually the surface that the, uh, that the material, uh, the the. The cap and then the geo-composite went on top of what you see in this frame. And this was, uh, the very first roll of material that was placed. Uh, these rolls are, um. Give or take about twenty-three feet wide and about five hundred and thirty feet long, um, it's it's, uh. Pretty neat to watch these guys roll this stuff out and not kill each other with it, um.
How much do these rolls weigh, I imagine?
You know, I'm not sure, but it's, it's heavy, um, there there's a, there's a large excavator on top of that slope and they have, they have a a rig in the in the boom of that. That holds that roll out and they they roll it off and, um, pretty big, uh, excavator and it was all it could handle. Holding that, holding that roll up, so they're, they're pretty, they're pretty heavy. And these are, um, some some other pictures of, uh, of the of the liner going down, um. And as I mentioned in this slide, it's a pretty large amount of square footage of material that had to go down. It's, the the landfill footprint that we closed was about twenty-eight acres.
So that's about how much plastic you had laid down?
Yep, yes, sir. And one thing, one thing, uh, that the cap profile didn't show on the first slide that I'd like to try to explain in this picture. Um, we had to, per the closure plans, we we dug a anchor trench at the toe of the slope, um, which is, which is outside, um, the the. Limits of the waste of the landfill, and what happens is that liner material rolls down into that anchor trench. The geo-composite drainage layer that's on top of the liner actually goes across that ditch and continues out beyond the toe of the slope. So basically, the the liner is keeping moisture from penetrating through the cap and getting into the into the landfill. The drainage layer is. Any water that does percolate down through the, through the cover soils gets on that drainage layer, goes to the bottom of the slope and then finds its way out, um. And it's, it is a proven, it is a proven method, um, that we anticipate will certainly work for us. Um, some additional pictures of the, of the drainage layer that's being placed over top of the liner. And it's nice to have friends at the airport, um, they, um. Buzz and some folks came out and took some aerial photos for us and Draper also had had taken some aerial photos. But this this picture here, if it's clear enough to see, is actually, uh, most all of the liners installed, most of the. Geo-composite installed and the and the soil you see is actually being placed on top of that material, so it's, uh. We're basically kind of covering the landfill back up with dirt at this point, um, there's some additional photos of of that same action.
How do you, uh, how do you, uh, get the first, the the dirt back on there without destroying the liner? How is that?
They start from the toe of the slope and this picture here will will kind of help show that, but they actually start, uh, applying dirt to to the material at the toe of the slope. And just work their way up the hill, so they they they'll be, they build themselves a pretty big cushion so that they can actually drive the machine, uh, on the dirt and not the, not the liner material.
Do they, uh, do they kind of compact it as they go along?
They do, yes, sir. And then these are, these are just pictures of a- after all of the, uh, um. Materials placed, we had to go back with six inches of, uh, topsoil, um, or amended soil, you know, there's always. Arguments about definitions of topsoil. All the material, all the material that that went into the closure came from onsite. We didn't import any material. Um, and we did have some material that qualified as topsoil that was stockpiled, um, and some of it we stripped off that. That, um, layer of, uh, intermediate cover, so we had to strip all of that material off and some of that had topsoil in it too, so. But all of it came, came from onsite, um, these are just more pictures of the soil being compacted and then, um. To the point where we were hydroseeding and as of this date, we're mowing now, so it's. We we still have some spots, uh, that we'll have to reseed and that that'll be an ongoing, uh, maintenance issue. Um, this slide, I I provided, um, some some scope of of how much material I took, sixty-five thousand three hundred and forty cubic yards of. Of vegetative soil and twenty-one thousand seven hundred cubic yards of topsoil, um, so it's a pretty fair amount of material.
So how high do you, when you mow the, uh, thing, how high do you mow it?
Well, we we don't, we certainly don't cut it real low, we just, we just.
No, but six inches, eight inches?
Yeah, six or eight inches and then the biggest thing for us is to make sure that no, no trees or anything are gonna start growing, um. We we keep the grass, you know, fairly high, but, um, patrol it regularly to make sure.
Same thing you do for a dam?
Yeah. Yeah, that's pretty much same thing.
Yep.
And these are just, just some pictures of some of the drainage. There's a pretty significant amount of drainage that went into this design. There are diversion. There are diversion dams around the the slopes that actually, um, keep all the water from just sheeting straight off from the top to the bottom, um. The, uh, the the dams divert the, uh, the sheet flow to certain points. There's four, um, downfalls. Around the, around the landfill so that we concentrate the water to those downfalls that are about mid-slope and then then pipe it to the ditches at the bottom. Uh, and so far, we've had a pretty wet spring and so far we haven't had any erosion on the slopes, um. One of the, one of the letdowns, um, has carried enough volume that it's kind of caused some erosion at the toe of the slope. It's outside of the. Uh, area of waste, but, um, that's a, that's an issue that we're working on to try to resolve, but it's, uh, pretty minor, um.
So what did the closure cost?
I knew you were gonna ask. The the, it was right at, um, two and a half million dollars, um, that included engineering fees, the the. The construction was two million three hundred and twenty thousand and the, uh, engineering costs were about a hundred and eighty-six thousand. One one thing, um, I know that engineer costs sounds high, um, but what you have to understand is, um. DEQ only comes out for a final inspection. They don't, they're not involved at all during the process of closure, um, so you have, we have to have. An engineer of record that was there every day, every day, all day, uh, that provided oversight of the project. They also did all the testing. There's a lot of. Quality assurance that has to be provided to DEQ at the end of the project. Uh, I mean, the the volumes of material that Draper had to submit to DEQ. Once we were finished, it's, uh, it's pretty amazing how much information goes in there.
And how's the, and what's gonna be the annual, uh, maintenance cost on this?
I've budgeted about fifty thousand a year, uh, most of those costs are monitoring costs because we still have to monitor, uh, groundwater, uh, landfill gas. Uh, most of the mowing costs, we're, we're handling in-house. We're, we're not subcontracting that, so we're doing the mowing, so most of that, most of that cost is environmental engineering fees. And that's, that's all I have. Glad answering questions again.
You wasn't asking for any more money, though.
Nope, not asking for any, no. I'll probably be back next week for some, or next meeting for something.
And within that, you're able to take care of the new scales as well, too, correct?
That's right. I provided another little PowerPoint scales, um. We we have held off on, if you recall, we had held off on that because, um, we wanted to make sure we got through the new sale and the closure within the funds we had budgeted and we did, so.
I I'd just like to say, uh, since I ended up on the Solid Waste Committee, I actually pay a little bit more attention to trash than I used to. I, I've, after visiting some other jurisdictions, both here and in other states, uh. Excellent job on this. Uh, other jurisdictions say, say that they're doing something and, uh, are not necessarily maintaining it to the, uh. Level that they're supposed to be, so excellent job for.
Thanks.
Alright. County Attorney's Report.
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
County Administrators Reports.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have three items tonight. Uh, the first item, um, I, uh. As I communicated to the board earlier, uh, we've been given notice by the Orange Youth Sports Foundation that it will, uh, continue to manage, operate, maintain Booster Park through December thirty-first, twenty fifteen. After which time, the management agreement with the board will cease. Um, I've included in your agenda package a copy of the letter, uh, giving notice to this. Uh, with the board's permission, I will schedule this, uh, for your August eleventh work session, uh. Uh, with the board's permission, uh, we'll schedule this, uh, for your August eleventh work session, uh, and, uh, what, uh, Director Parks and Rec and myself and, and probably Mr. Hillerbrand will work on. Probably Ms. Bradley, I mean, there's kind of a cross, cross departmental of, of what are some of the issues and considerations that you all will need to, to start assessing, um, since we're going to have to take over the capital facilities, operations, maintenance and athletic and special event program, or are there alternatives other than the county, uh, doing this? And we wanna kinda lay out all of this and get some direction from you before we start diving into, to the data and, and, and coming forth with some recommendations. Alright, uh, the next item in my head, gentlemen, uh, was the board, uh, s- school board liaison committee. Uh, we met on July sixteenth, as you know, Mr. White, Mr. Goodwin, our vice chair, uh, Goodwin are your all's representative, uh, Ms. Page and Ms. Winter, um, but, you know, uh, and our, the school board re- representatives. Uh, we met, uh, had a real good, in fact, the meeting went probably about two and a half hours, we had a lot of two hours, pretty wide ranging. Uh, Mr. Arnold, who is the capital facilities, uh, uh, lead, uh, with the schools, gave us a pretty significant, uh, A to Z soup to nuts kind of assessment of the school's physical plant by school. Uh, some of, uh, what came out, at least my, my opinion, there's a lot of things that are functionally obsolete at these schools, I mean, schools are built for, you know, forty, fifty, sixty year life. Some of the components, windows, roofs, you know, those type of systems have run their, run their, their life. Um, and so I think it, it helped inform everybody there of what the schools are facing, not only with the kinda recurring maintenance, capital maintenance that has to be done, but also looking at, uh, Gordon Barber and you have the head start or in buildings, the houses that will probably have to be, uh, replaced here not too soon and then what does that mean, uh, from, from school facilities wise? The other part of the meeting was spent with looking at, um, where Orange County was and, and instructional delivery. If, and the committee wanted to kinda step back and take this look at what would mean for us to have a K fourteen system and to integrate, um, uh, career technical with Germanic Community College as well as, uh, early college for our juniors and seniors. And so how do we work through that or what's some things that other systems, uh, Dr. Tanner has had experience in this when she was with Lori County and we heard from some of her staff members. The next steps, uh, for this committee, uh, gave two, two directions and I confirmed with, with Ms. Bradley today that I said what I said and I got the response, that I got a response. Um, we'll be coming to you here at the next meeting to, uh, brief you all on the start of our CIP update process. And as far as the school's master plan for the high school, everybody at that committee said that they really wanna step back right now and take a more comprehensive look at the school facilities and that we will program the school's high school master plan just where it is now. It's not, they're not going to try to attempt to figure out how to finance or whether some of those projects, uh, will, will necessarily, uh, be independent of, of other things, I guess that's the best way of characterizing it. So, I'm going to just keep the status quo as far as the master plan's concerned. Uh, the other thing is that Dr. Tanner and I will, uh, uh, will meet with the Germana president, uh, Dr. Sam here very shortly and start engaging him and I think the committee's gonna bring him in to, to brief them on what Germana and early college and, and career tech. Um, the last thing I'll say is I feel pretty good about where the two, uh, each of the respective board members are and trying to kinda get their arms around this so that they can come back and report to, uh, each board and then also starting to work together on some of these larger, more global issues about where public education in Orange County is going to be going or where these two bodies can work towards, um, uh, meeting, I guess, the future needs, uh, because the, the, the past, I think everybody was in agreement, the past way instruction was done, maybe for those that are going to college, those that maybe only an associate's degree is, is, is where they, they see themselves or career technical. How can we adjust at least the secondary school, the high school part of that to, to take advantage of, of some, some innovation? So, I'll stop there, are there any questions? When we meet again, we, they left it up, uh, probably the next, uh, month before we, we get with Dr. Sam and, and take care of some of those things.
Any questions for Brian on that?
Alright, good, thank you. Alright, the last thing I have is Foothill Housing Corporation has asked for a waiver of a electrical permit, uh, of fifty-one dollars. You have done this in the past, we have budgeted, uh, monies for these, uh, refunds. This is for work that they do, uh, have done or are doing, uh, for a low income, uh, uh, household here to affect this, uh, electrical power. Uh, this was received in hand just hour before the board meeting, I didn't feel comfortable bringing it to you as a late item, wanted to do it in the oldness of a regular agenda, so it's here and recommended for you to.
So moved. So we're giving a, uh, permit fee of fifty-one dollars.
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Curiously enough.
Thank you, sir. Um, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any no- no, new business or old business, any board comment? I've got one item. Uh, received a letter from the Northern Virginia Four H Educational Conference Center. On behalf of the Northern Virginia Four H Educational Conference Center, Board of Directors and the thousands of young people who camp at the Four H Center, like to thank the Orange County Board of Supervisors for the FY sixteen contribution in the amount of a thousand dollars which was received July thirteenth, two thousand fifteen. Uh, any other board comment? Any questions on the informational items? Okay. Any appointments? Uh, I have one, uh, Donna Merriman, uh, is, uh, willing to, would like to serve as another, uh, term on the youth commission for District Five. And also, uh, uh, we look at, we're, I think I've got somebody ready to do the, uh, Board of, uh, Assessment Appeals. Uh, are we ready to do that yet or do we wanna do that as a group?
No, we'll do all, cause we have to petition the court, so we'll just do them all at one time.
Okay, alright.
I think we have this scheduled for the August eleventh meeting.
Okay, alright. I've got somebody, alright. Uh, any other, uh, uh, appointments?
Does, uh, has, uh, uh, John Graves or Philip Bear, have they been, uh, have they been, uh, contacted about the tourist advisory committee, committee contact there at all? Have they, do we have any information on that?
John Graves is not going to be renewed as a term because he's no longer a storefront business owner in Gordonsville. And that position was, we're looking for someone who had day-to-day connections with and was a store owner or operator in Gordonsville for that particular position. He is, he has moved his storefront operations to Charlottesville. And so Philip Bear has been contacted, I believe, he is going to renew. So we're in the process of filling, trying to look to some, for someone to fill, uh, John Graves' position as well as the one that is still currently vacant from Bryan Robinson.
Um, how about Ryan Hall and D N Marshall?
They have not been contacted yet because their time, but they will be. I expect both of them to renew.
I think I would probably look for at least one of those.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would be looking for somebody to replace at least one of them.
Okay, all in favor, yeah, go ahead.
I want to, uh, point Christine Caston to the library board.
Okay. Alright. Any other, uh, appointments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Alright. Uh, calendar. Any comments on the calendar, questions? Okay, they're none. Uh, would you read the?
Alright. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to go into closed session for purposes of consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel. And where, whereas pursuant to section two point two thirty-seven eleven A Seventh Code of Virginia, such discussion may occur in closed session, now therefore be it resolved that on this twentieth day of July, twenty fifteen, that the Orange County Board of Supervisors hereby authorizes discussion of the fore said matter in closed session.
So moved.
Sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. That's a new record here.
Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, where the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. Crocker?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Crane?
Aye.
And Mr. White, Mr. Goodwin are absent.
Okay.
Will you adjourn?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Good.